Okay, I'm going to call together, or call to order this Monday, August 11th, 2025, meeting the Montgomery County Board of Supervisors. Our first item on our agenda tonight is to go into closed meeting. Be it resolved, the Montgomery County Board of Supervisors of Montgomery County, Virginia, hereby enters into closed meeting for the purpose of discussing the following. Section 2 dot, 2 dot 2 dash 3711, one, discussion, consideration, or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining, or resignation of specific officers, appointees, or employees of any public body. One, adjustment and appeals board. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Madam Clerk, if you'll call the roll, please.
Ms. Bone?
Aye.
Mr. Kits?
Aye.
Mr. Keen?
Aye.
Ms. Fritjekowski?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Graffski?
Aye.
Chair de Mots?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
We are in closed meeting. There a motion to come out of closed meeting?
So moved. Second.
Madam Clerk, if you'll call the roll, please.
Mr. Kits?
Aye.
Mr. Keen?
Aye.
Ms. Fritjekowski?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Graffski?
Aye.
Ms. Bone?
Aye.
Chair de Mots?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Now we need to certify the closed meeting. Whereas the Board of Supervisors of Montgomery County has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote and in accordance with the provisions of the Freedom of Information Act, and whereas section 2.2 dash 3711 of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by the Board that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law. that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law, now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Supervisors of Montgomery County, Virginia, hereby certifies that, to the best of each member's knowledge, one, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting to which this certification resolution applies; and two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion conveying the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the Board. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Madam Clerk, if you'll call the roll, please.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Fidzikowski?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Grafsky?
Aye.
Ms. Bone?
Aye.
Mr. Kits?
Aye.
Chair de Mots?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Next, we have our moment of silence and pledge of allegiance led by Chris Lawrence tonight.
Thanks. Please stand as you're able and join me in a moment of silence. Will you join me in the pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Chris. Our presentation this evening is from the Virginia Department of Transportation. We have Mr. David Clark here with us tonight. Welcome, sir.
Thank you very much. Good evening. I'll start off with just some of the maintenance items that we've been working on this past month. Probably the biggest planned one was a safety project to improve site distance at Route 8 in Camp Carriers Brook Road. It was quite a... If you'd been down that way, we laid the slope back there quite a bit, had to flag traffic around it. In the middle of that, found a pipe that had been buried for a while in there and got that opened and a drop inlet and turned into a very good project. If you know that area, that can be a kind of a telephone coming around a curve with the site distance and everything there. I think that project improved it. Other than that, it's been kind of normal stuff. We did a lot of patching work. We patched out pretty much all of Indian Run. It had been needing some patching for a while, and that's actually going to get another overlay next year. So Indian Run got a lot of patching. Also did some on Lick Run and Norris Run. Finished those pipes, maybe I mentioned last time. But also did some patching on Lick Run, Norris Run, did some on Craig's Creek Road, Mount Tabor Road, Thomas Lane got some, and Brunswick Road, which is a small subdivision off of Prices Fork Road, needed some patching as well. We had our big boomax out cutting on Galleon Ridge, also on Taylor Hollow, and some on Mud Pike. Machining a lot of gravel roads, because, you know, just about every season is gravel road season. It's just different problems depending on what the weather is. Did some shoulder work in Walton. I know we still have some drainage work to do in Walton that you'd mentioned last time. In fact, Walton had one of those sort of really heavy isolated storms that come through. It seems been coming through the last few months, hit Walton pretty bad last week before. Picking up storms, you know, storming the trees, tree calls out in various locations, and did some shoulder repair work on Meadow Creek Road and on Camp Carriers Brook, as well as some secondary patching on Craig Mountain, on Willis Hollow, some on Bonner's Run. We're still going to do some towards the end of Bonner's Run, but we got the first section of it just off Route 11. Did some spot patching in there. And that's what I have for our maintenance updates right now. Still working with the property owners on Taylor Hollow. I don't know when the schedule for that will be, but they've all been very cooperative, so it should be good.
Great. Thank you. And also, thank you. I know I woke up to two very early phone calls the day that Walton washed out.
Yeah.
And the response was very organized and very fast.
Oh, well, thanks very much.
So, thank you.
I'll pass that along to our guys.
Yes, please do. Let's see if anybody has any questions. We'll start with you, Supervisor Bone. No questions? Supervisor Kits?
Yeah, with all the rain that we've been having, we're always having problems with a little bit of flooding here and there, but the bottom of Vickers Switch and Pepper's Ferry started washing all the way across the road. Now, granted, it's not going to get deep right there, but it was a pretty good runoff. Down there, it was... And then up towards the top of the hill, they had a couple other issues, but the real... It was enough to put dirt across the road as it was coming across. That's a pretty heavily traveled road right there, so just want to...
Some might have got plugged up in there, preventing them.
It's the first time I've seen it. I drive that road every day, but it was a pretty good flow of sand and dirt going across.
Yeah.
But other than that, thank you for all that you're doing and the patchwork you're doing, because I know y'all are busy. So, but thank you.
Thanks.
Supervisor King?
Appreciate everything you've done. You and I spoke before the meeting, and a lot of stuff you named off is you've been doing in District D, and I do appreciate that.
And we've got a request to look at a pothole on Tyler Avenue, so we got the address, and we're going to work on that.
Okay. And on five points, the gravel side?
Mm-hmm.
If we could get somebody out there to scrape it, or they getting a lot of rivets out there.
Okay.
I appreciate you.
Sure.
Supervisor Grafsky?
Thanks for the updates. Just curious if this had come across your desk yet or is on the kind of work plan? But we were going to install children at play signs on Old Fort Road.
Yeah, I'll work with the county staff. The county actually installs those, but it does.
The county, okay.
The county does, but they work with us on getting a permit for it.
Got it. Okay. I knew we were involved in it and paid for them. I just wasn't sure who actually...
It's on which road, did you say?
Uh, Old Fort?
Old Fort, okay. Off Thomas Lane and that section in there.
Yeah, I think it's on Old Fort, kind of in the vicinity of Mockingbird.
Okay.
Also, the top of Nellie's Cave Road and Bishop Road.
That's right. Yes, we did.
The three.
Supervisor Biggs?
I don't have anything. Just keep filling up the potholes.
Okay, we'll keep filling them up. We did have a meeting on 81, a public meeting down in Salem a couple weeks ago. That was part two of a three-part public input meeting for 81. There'll be another one end of summer, early fall. I'll keep you notified on when that is. You don't have to attend the public meeting to make comments. The displays that they have at the public meeting are available online when they do put them online, so I'll let you know when that comes open.
Thanks.
Vice Chair Fidzikowski?
Yeah, just another reminder of what we talked about earlier, the speed study that was requested for Allegheny between Flick and Yates. It's the S-curves that are the concern, so... And also, I guess because of all these recent thunderstorms, vegetation seems to be really growing pretty good. In my district, I've seen a lot of signs that are... that need daylighting, especially those new, brand-new, beautiful Chevron signs in the curves.
Yeah.
A lot of them are getting covered up. I don't think it would take much to clear them, but there in Mount Pleasant, there's some that are covered up, especially with school starting Wednesday. Of course, I'm here, I'm telling you, Monday, but some of the school bus stop signs are covered.
And we have worked with the school transportation people on cutting back some of the stuff, and I'm sure we'll get... When the buses start rolling, we'll get more... Some more specific locations that we need to work on.
I'm sure it'll save them a lot of money in radio antennas.
Yeah.
Yeah. That's all I got.
Well, thank you very much for being here this evening. Did that bring up any questions for anybody else? Okay, well, we appreciate you. We'll see you in about six weeks, next month?
Yep, thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night. Okay, the next item on our agenda is a public hearing, and this is a public hearing, it's an intent to adopt resolutions amending the fiscal year 2025/2026 budget by more than 1% of the total expenditures. Chris, do you have anything to add about this public hearing tonight?
Nothing specific, other than the memo describes the capital and the operating and where it's coming from and where it's gone to, so... And the school staff is here if you guys have any questions.
Fabulous. Well, we've got this. It's... There are three things covered in the public hearing, and then in new business, we'll vote on them separately. So if we have questions, we can handle those line by line in new business, I think. And I don't have a sign-up sheet.
There's no sign-ups. It's right underneath your iPad, but not for this public hearing.
The sign-up sheet is underneath my iPad. So we didn't have anybody sign up in advance for this public hearing, but anybody is welcome to come forward and address the Board on this issue. You'll have four minutes. Would anybody like to speak to this? Okay, I'm going to go ahead and close this public hearing, and we will move to public address. Sorry. Good. All right, public address. We do have four minutes. Just come forward, state your name and where you reside. We did have one speaker that signed up, Chris Waltz from Christiansburg. If you'd like to come forward, sir. And after Mr. Waltz speaks, if anybody else would like to come forward, you'll have an opportunity.
I'm sorry, Chair. Wayman Pack signed up too. He's before Chris.
I'm so sorry. Chris, do you mind to give Mr... Mr. Pack says you can go first. I'm sorry. I need my glasses or something. Welcome, sir.
Welcome, Chris Waltz. I live in Christiansburg. I'm here to talk to you about town staff. Angie, my wife wanted some documents. Weren't sure where to get them from, so she came here about the... Joined her study for the water authority, you know? And Angie told her, she said, "Well, the water department had it." I mean, she could have said, "Just go see them. Not my problem." She didn't. And she talked to Jennifer, your FOIA officer, and got the documents, you know? She went above and beyond. And my interactions with her, she's professional. She's a good-hearted person. She's a good person. And I think she thinks about the citizens. And we have no mistakes between us, that we may agree to disagree on policy decisions or recommendations she makes, but I think she really has the citizen's best interests at heart when she does her job. And as far as Jennifer, if you all ever let her go, it will be the move of seven fools. Because by state law, she has five working days to answer my FOIA requests. She usually doesn't even take five hours. I have sent her a request at like 4:58 in the afternoon on a Monday. Walked into this meeting, and she'll come up to me and go, "I'm gonna have you what you asked for in just a minute." You should be getting an email. She's just awesome, and there's never any issues. And I've dealt with FOIA officers all over the state. I've had a FOIA officer take 12 days to send me one email that was a total of three lines, because they spent the entire 12 days figuring out how to not give it to me. And it wasn't even anything that was of consequence in the email. But she is awesome, and she deserves a raise. And your other staff, Chris, we disagree sometimes, but he's always open and honest and willing to talk. And the same for the county attorney there, Marty. You know, he's done some stuff that he probably didn't have to do or responded to a question that he didn't have to respond to. But when it comes to the citizens, that's what you want from your staff, are people who will engage with the citizens and not just try and say, "That's just the way the government works. You should just sit down and be quiet and hand over your money." But thanks to all your staff. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Pack, if you would like to follow that? Welcome, sir.
My name is Wayman Pack, and I live on Pondy Woods Road in Reiner. And looking back on my notes, I noticed it was last year when the ordinance was proposed to open a temporary satellite polling location in Blacksburg to allow early voting. When the ordinance was proposed and subsequently passed, it was just for this election in November 2024. It's a presidential election. It's going to be a huge turnout. What's your biggest use this year? You didn't have to be a fortune teller to see your future plans. And now that it's summer of 2020/25, here we are again. We just want to open a satellite polling location in Blacksburg. But don't worry, it's only for this 2025 election. And oh, by the way, we also want to open locations in Reiner and Elliston too, because we want to be fair to everyone. When did we become a nanny state? I suppose for the next election, someone will be suggesting to call all of the eligible residents and asking them when it would be convenient for a county employee to come by their home with a ballot. I don't know who to be the most disappointed with. This board or the people that stopped by the location in Blacksburg last year and commented on how handy it was to be able to vote on their way to a Virginia Tech football game. Really? That's what gets people out to vote? Voting is not important enough civic duty to make a trip for that alone. You can only make time to vote if you're only on your way to a football game. What about the poor inmates who were incarcerated at the time and couldn't make it to the game? Oh, I know. Virginia law allows persons confined while awaiting trial or having been convicted or misdeemed to vote by absentee ballot. They may not be able to stop by a temporary polling location to vote on their way to a football game, but they have the right to vote without cost regardless. Poor inmates. They can vote for their government representatives but can't attend the football game. I don't care where you're located in Montgomery County. If you're an eligible voter in Blacksburg, Reiner, Elliston, Christiansburg, anywhere else in Montgomery County, even if stationed overseas, you have the right to request an absentee ballot by mail, and it will be provided to you at no charge. There's not even the charge to return it by mail. Just follow the directions for completion, and if you're able to seal an envelope, the United States Postal Service will take care of it for you. There's a current member of the Montgomery County staff that I've spoken with who voted absentee last year. And after hearing their comments, I believe they'll continue indefinitely after finding out how easy the process is. I personally don't care how many people are contacted to pack the hearing in favor of this ordinance. It's part of my tax dollars that would fund this unnecessary venture. Ask the registrar what the cost would be if even 50% of the eligible voters in the county decided to vote by mail in relation to the costs associated with opening the locations as requested in this proposed ordinance. And see if you, as fiduciaries of our tax dollars, believe that this is the best way for our taxes to be spent. Do you know what a fiduciary is? As Merriam-Webster defines it, it is a duty obligating a fiduciary, an agent or trustee supervisors, to act with loyalty, honesty, and in a manner consistent with the best interests of the beneficiary of the fiduciary relationship. Taxpayers. A previous speaker spoke in favor of this ordinance, mentioning the disabled being able to vote early in a location closer to their own. I may not be physically disabled, but if I was, it would be much more convenient for me to vote from the comfort of my own home for free rather than traveling to any outside location, wherever it may be. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to come forward to address the Board for public address? Seeing none, we're going to close public address, and there is no addendum this evening. And so we will move into work session. Our work session this evening will have two items. One, early voter satellite offices, and two, 2026 legislative priorities. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Is there any discussion? Madam Clerk, if you'll call the roll, please.
Ms. Fidzikowski?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Grafsky?
Aye.
Ms. Bone?
Aye.
Mr. Kits?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Chair de Mots?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Thank you. Our first item is our early voter satellite office discussion, and we do have Ms. Fire from our registrar to speak with us this evening. And I'll just turn it over to you and let you start, if that's what you're comfortable with.
Sure.
Okay, great. Thank you so much for being here tonight.
Sure. Good evening, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, and the members of the Board. Just to let you know, I've talked to Angie probably every day for the past two weeks about what we can do to make early voting accessible to everybody in the county. We've come up with a plan to keep from spending money for more voting machines to utilize every Saturday for the 45 days, beginning with Shawsville Middle School Cafeteria, the two Saturdays, September the 20th and the 27th. I'm recommending we open that from 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. The next satellite location would be the Auburn High School Cafeteria. The principal's also nice enough to allow us to use the auxiliary gym if we decide that's better for us. Those Saturdays would be October the 4th, October the 11th. Hours also 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. Next, we have the last three Saturdays in Blacksburg, at the Blacksburg Community Center. That would... That would be October the 18th, 25th, and November 1st. Hours 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. The reason is code section 242-701.2 requires us to conduct early voting at our office. The last two Saturdays is mandated by the state. Those hours must be eight hours between the hours of 8:00 and 5:00. So setting those Blacksburg sites any different hours would cause total voter confusion. There's already enough confusion as there is. August the 19th, IT staff will accompany me and my staff over to Shawsville and Auburn. We have to conduct voting equipment security checks. If that equipment does not check out and does, the poll pads do not communicate with each other, the locations will be a no. We have a 10-page state document that must be completed each place that we go. IT staff sits there along with me and staff. We have to check off multiple items on those pages to make sure that everything is verified. The last thing I'd like to mention is voter confusion. And, and this, this could, I mean, this is just everybody's, this just, just become a knowledge. So our office is 45 days straight, including the last two Saturdays. Even when we're in the Blacksburg location the last two weeks, we have people that show up over there asking the director, Lynn, "When can I vote? I thought I voted here last year." They're showing up there for the 45 days, not the last two weeks. If we move these to Shawsville and Auburn, we're gonna have the same thing. Voters will show up there for the next election saying, "I voted here last year. Why can't I vote here today?" We have them show up at our office Mondays prior to every election. You cannot vote at our office on Mondays prior to election because on Sundays, we're working at my office all day to program the equipment. So no one votes at my office on the Monday unless very special circumstances. So when you move satellite locations around place to place, it does create voter confusion. What I would like to ask is that the county support that we send out voter cards, postcard notices through a bulk mailing if you pass this on August the 25th, so that everyone knows where these satellite locations are, what day they are, what the hours of operation are. And that's all I have for you.
Okay, so I'm sure we're gonna have some questions this evening, and I am going to start with Supervisor Kits.
So do you have a ballpark on what the mailing's gonna cost to do this?
Haven't had time to check. I've been ballot proofing for the last two weeks.
So now, part of this is my fault, and I'll say this because of this, because last year, when I said whether we were gonna be able to do this or not, I said it was a test case. Came back with a lot of overtime, and that was the biggest concern that I had. The compromise on that was to shorten it down, to limit the days, to limit the staff stress, to try to cut that cost down without causing to buy more equipment or anything else. Does that allow us to reduce the overtime and the hours? I understand the stress of moving it from place to place and involving county IT in order to be able to do that. Does that, does that reduce some of the costs and the overtime requirements?
So you forget that we're still in my office for 45 days. So I would have to bring in some officers to help us in my office while I send staff to these locations. My initial thought is that my entire staff, myself included, would go to Shawsville the first two Saturdays. Because two of my staff, one here, has never worked an early voting location. So that's my initial thinking. Will it cut down staff hours? Possibly. Will it cut down on staff stress? I don't know.
My biggest thing was, because I made, it's not a promise, but I put it forth that if we did this in one spot, that we had to be fair to be able to put it in other spots. But I don't wanna add, one, I don't wanna buy new equipment. Two, I don't wanna buy, get extra personnel, because it's hard enough for you to get personnel from what I understand as it is. Um, and this was like a kind of a compromise to allow to extend it into the rural areas, because that was one of my biggest concerns from last time was that we weren't taking care of the rural areas for those certain days. I do like the idea of being able to send out a mailer, but I would be interested in seeing what the costs are. And I'd also be interested just to see what your projections are before the hearing comes up. Because I know you don't know now. I was just ballparking. I apologize for putting you on the spot on this one. But just to see what the overtime was, because that was my biggest concern, because I think it was 260 hours of overtime last time. And I wanna make sure our people are taken care of, and that's the biggest concern that I have. I don't think I have anything else. That's what I've got written down, but I might think of something else as we go around. Thank you.
I'd like to address your equipment.
Oh, yes, ma'am.
So the federal government, the feds are changing our equipment. So the state's recommending we do not purchase any equipment right now because we don't know when we're gonna be mandated to change that equipment. It's looking like 2029, 2030. The equipment that I have right now, once the upgrades come, when the feds change it, will go another 10 years. So they do not recommend that you purchase equipment right now.
Okay, so it's, it's the good and the compromise. We're not trying to put up three stations. We're putting up one that rotates these locations. Did we already have the equipment for?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Yes.
Supervisor Grafsky?
Yeah, so I mean, you know, similarly to Supervisor Kits, some of the same concerns for, for you, for your staff, for our community, and, and where they are able to vote, should this move forward. I mean, if, if we'll remember, last year, I, I voted against this. And, and that was because, not because I didn't support increased access to early voting, but because I, I supported more equitable access to early voting. And so like Supervisor Kits said, you know, thinking through this and, and trying to minimize any additional outlay, whether it's equipment, people, things like that. You know, could we look at, at some sort of a traveling so, solution, if you will, to this? And so it'll, it'll be interesting to see maybe some har, some harder numbers once you've had. I'm guessing you don't have a whole lot of free time between now and, and November 2nd. But, um, you know, any additional information that we can get over the next couple of weeks, I think will, will help assist in, in, in making sure that we're using your resources, your people appropriately, and, and not mishandling those resources.
Thank you.
Supervisor King?
Thank you for being here.
You're welcome.
Well, we tried, I didn't vote for it, but it was passed last year to try this voting in Blacksburg. Says it's gonna do one time. What was it, 4,000 people voted in 14 days or something? Her staff is working hard to make sure everybody can vote. I do not think we need to pass this this year. You're putting strain on her staff. People have 45 days to vote. Forty-five days. When I first started voting, you had voting day. You may, it was very important to people to vote. So go vote. You have 45 days, as Mr. Pack stated. They'll mail you one. It won't cost you nothing. They have enough stress with the public. I don't know if any of you ever worked the polls or not, but it can get a little hairy. I think we need to respect her office. Let her have early voting at her office, that the taxpayers are paying for it. That's why we got that building. That's why we remodeled that building. There's a bus stop there. Plenty of parking. I think, my opinion, we need to respect her staff and let the voting go there. They can call her. Can they call you and get an absentee ballot?
They have to fill it out.
Huh?
They have to fill it out. But yes, we can mail them an application.
Yeah, they can mail it. That's all I got to say.
Supervisor Biggs?
Well, I sort of, I like the, um, I don't know if you call it a compromise or whatever you wanna call it, but including the Reiner and the Shawsville area, along with Blacksburg and Christiansburg. I like that, um, schedule. I just had a question about the voter card. Are you saying like it would just, it would have the same information and it would go to, um, all the registered voters? It would just say, it would have the information about where they could vote on what days?
Like a postcard.
Yeah.
And it would just have every satellite location, the dates, the times, everything on it.
Because they can go to any of them.
Yes, ma'am.
So just something like, if you're gonna vote early, here you go.
65,000 people would receive that, I hope.
Okay. Would it also include your office?
Our address?
Yeah, I mean, like if they wanna go there. Okay. All right. Thanks.
Okay, Supervisor Boone?
Just following up on Supervisor Biggs' comment just now about including your office. So just to be clear, 45 days ahead, your office is open five days a week, from what time to what time? Nine to five. Nine to five. And then practically every Saturday.
We're open the last two Saturdays.
Right.
It's mandated by the state.
These six Saturdays will...
Seven. That would be a total of seven Saturdays.
Mm-hmm. So, um, everyone in this county that is registered to vote has six days a week for those last 45 days to, to vote. Sounds good to me. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Vice Chair Fidzikowski?
I wanna start out by saying that I appreciate the fact that Supervisor Kits was trying to spread it out so it didn't look so blatantly one-sided by having only early voting in Blacksburg. I, I appreciate that thinking, but, um, after hearing what it's going to be doing to the registrar's office, having to pull people out of the office to get these sites ready, have to backfill with other people in the office, um, I agree with Supervisor King. I just don't see it being necessary. And we went through this, um, this discussion, um, at the last election. And I don't know of anybody that could sum it up better in less than four minutes than what Mr. Pack did. It is already so easy. A child could do it. And there's probably some groups in this country that would like children to vote. But, uh, I'm not in favor of that. I'd go on record for that. But, uh, I think we should just forget about this for this year. And let's just try it the way we initially wanted it to work. Where we have the early voting at the main office in Christiansburg. We have the, the voting by mail. I don't, I don't see any reason why we should put the registrar's office and the employees through a whole lot of stress over, um, something that anybody in this county can take care of themselves. So I, I'm, I'm in favor of not doing it and not doing any satellites at all.
I do have a follow-up question from the information you provided. So on August 19th, you're gonna visit the two, um, locations just to determine if those are even viable for you, correct?
We have to. It's required by the code.
Okay.
And we'll be going out late, but they won't allow us in the schools until after 3:30. So we'll go down to Shawsville first at 3:30, and then when we finish, we'll go over to Auburn.
Okay. The information that you'll gather there is whether or not you can set those sites up, if it'll work with the machines. Will you know that night if that's a possibility or, or the next day, just in enough time for us to?
That day.
Okay.
That evening, I should say. It'll be late, but that evening.
And then you said there are 65,000 voter, registered voters.
Currently.
Doing a little quick math here. Even if the postcards were a quarter each, that's $16,250. I understand why you're asking for that, because you talking about voter confusion makes sense to me. But even if, and I'm no expert in bulk mailings. I'm looking to somebody that might be a little bit more experienced. But even if the postcards were a quarter each, if we wanted to notify citizens, that's a considerable amount of money. And I think of value to make the notice, and so I certainly appreciate you bringing that up. Does anybody else have any more questions for Connie while she's sitting up here? Or standing up here, rather?
I, I really don't have a question other than what you just said and what Connie had said earlier about voter confusion. If we're gonna, every election, keep changing this thing around, we're never gonna get a handle on it. So I think we need to go back to the basics and do what we originally set out to do.
And if I can make a statement, we do not currently use Shawsville School for a polling location. So that is outside the norm of our polling locations. We do use Blacksburg Community Center on election days, a polling location, and still it's creating confusion.
I appreciate that perspective a lot. Hearing that is valuable. Does anybody else have anything for Connie? Supervisor Grafsky?
One more quick question, and, and you may not have this answer in your pocket right now, but do you have, i- is there evidence, is there data that supports that additional early voting increases turnout, like on a percentage basis, right? Like I can't, you can't look at hard numbers.
So when I gave you the numbers, when I sent you the numbers, you saw that a lot of Blacksburgs still come to our office to vote.
That's right. That's right. I'm, I'm saying kind of on a year-over-year, or on an election, over-election basis.
Especially a presidential or the gubernatorial elections. Yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Okay. Well, thank you very much for being here with us tonight. I think you're, you're hearing some of the information that, that people are wanting to hear. We certainly understand how limited your time is in your office on a day-to-day basis, so thank you. I know you've put a lot of work into this already. We really appreciate it, Connie. Thanks. Is there any other discussion about this topic before we move to the legislative priorities? Okay, so let's move on to our legislative priorities for 2026. These are for our delegates and senators at the state level. And we've included our legislative priorities for 2025, which were redlined and updated based on laws that were passed, and then a draft list for 2026. Chris, did you have anything to add?
That's exactly what I was gonna say.
Twins?
I think between Marty and I, we'll do our best to answer any questions you have. The one thing that is timely is Delegate Ballard has asked that we have, if we have anything new, we need to get that to him by August 18th so he can start working on his side of, you know, the process.
Did we have any, anybody introduce anything new into the draft list? I'm not aware of anything new that came forward. Would you like to make an introduction of school vouchers to the draft list?
Yeah, I would. I'd like to put it back on the list.
Okay, so we'll, um, let's talk about school vouchers then.
Okay.
I think that'll be a, a vibrant discussion. Go ahead.
I think that, um, in the light of the fact that we are really no better off grade-wise for students than what we were, um, or before COVID hit us, I think that some alternatives, uh, would be helpful for parents. And the ones that feel that their child is not getting the education they need, they can find an, an alternative. And in order to make that transition, a school voucher would help them out tremendously. So I think it's a good legislative priority that we had on there, but was taken off mysteriously.
I don't think it was mysterious.
They just did it.
Well, and I'll respond to that and give others the opportunity as well. You know, this is a topic that we do not agree on, so I would not be supportive of adding school vouchers to our legislative priorities. Would anybody else like to speak to that topic?
So I gather what we'd have to do in order, unless you have consensus during our work session, is you'd have to come out and vote on it, right, at some point in time?
I think, yeah, tonight, it, it's just a draft, to adjust the draft. So if we had consensus to add it during work session, we could add it. But we will vote on the legislative priorities later.
Well, I would also kick in there that, you know, this week, you know, we're having the VACO steering committee meetings, and I don't know if, I'm on the education one. I don't know if there's anything that, you know, we might pick up from those meetings that would apply here or not. But it's good to sort of go through and see if there's anything else that we might need to add. You know how I feel about vouchers, so I don't have to go into that. It's called NO. So.
Supervisor Boone?
I'm in NO also.
Okay. Supervisor King?
Well, you know, everybody knows I'm a yes vote on this. Parents deserve a choice. It's their tax dollar, too.
So I, I'm a no, and, and while I don't disagree that, um, our, our community members shouldn't have choices, I guess one of my, my biggest issues with private schools is the, the, the lack of transparency and some of the, um, and not being held to the same standards that our public schools are held to. When, you know, because they're receiving public money, they've got to meet certain standards. Private schools often are not subject to the same, uh, rulebook or playbook that the public schools are. And so I think if they're receiving public money, then they need to be much more publicly transparent with their practices, with their standards, with how they conduct themselves, and so...
Are you talking academic standards?
Yeah.
So you, they, you, your, your thinking is that private schools just take the money and don't teach the kids anything?
No, but I, but I, not that. They, they teach, right? They teach to a curriculum. I, I don't, I don't know that there is necessarily parity between their curriculum and a public school curriculum.
Well, um, I, I would have to admit that I do not know the answer to that, but I don't think it works that way. And I, and I also believe that the biggest, um, argument against vouchers is that it takes money from public schools, and I'm saying it doesn't have to. But if your thinking is every extra penny that this state collects has to go to public education, then you're thinking wrong, because there are a lot of priorities in this state, and, um, there, there has to be enough money to help parents do that. There, there really has to be. And, uh, and I do think that private schools, um, in many cases, do a much better job, mainly because they probably have smaller class sizes, some of them. Um, there's probably a lot of advantages. But I would like to leave that up to the parents. Let them decide where they think their kid would do best at. You know, some kids, um, and I think most teachers, and I'd say Supervisor Biggs would have to agree, that, um, some kids just learn differently than other kids. And by providing a, an alternate, um, they may benefit from that, so I don't know. But I, I do think they do have to meet standards for the state. I, I really do think they do, but I, I don't know that for sure, so I would have to get back with you.
I'd just like to throw in a comment about the funding. As we all know, the J-Larke study came out and said that the state was not doing what they needed to do for public education. That is a fact, and that came from that study. And so when you look at funding for education and the state still isn't doing what they're supposed to be doing, and then you want to provide vouchers, I would disagree with Vice Chair Fidzikowski on where that money would come from. It's gonna come out of the education pot. There is no other pot for it to come out of, especially when you're not fulfilling the duties as a state that the J-Larke study has recommended. So that's where I think there's a big disconnect.
Well, how much is J-Larke recommending?
It's a multi-purpose, I mean, it goes over, I don't know how many years, but to get it to where it needs to go. We can have, we can actually have a presentation on it if you want.
Yeah, the, um, I mean, I look at how many millions of dollars have been increased for education just in the last four years. I mean, significant amounts of money, but you're saying that, that still doesn't meet J-Larke
Right.
standard that they came up with.
Period.
Okay. I still say there's still enough money to help parents, because you're not talking about the majority. You're talking about, uh, a small percentage of parents that would even use that. Because private schools on, for the most part, do not have the, the facilities that public schools have. They don't have the big gyms, swimming pools, tracks, all these other, um, extras. So, um, a, a lot of parents wouldn't send their kids to private schools because they want them involved in, let's say, big sports teams or whatever, whatever they want. But, uh, um, yeah, I don't, in this, in this day and age, I, I get the impression that we could pay every teacher, just starting out, a hundred thousand dollars a year to start, and we would still be short somehow. It's just, it, it, I kind of look at our local situation. Every year, we increase the school budget, every year. Sometimes by a lot, like ten-point-five million? And yet, what do we get when we, when the report cards come in? And I mean the, uh, the national report card comes in. The, the kids still aren't picking up what they're supposed to be picking up. They're not learning for the investment. There we go. Our return on investment isn't very good. We keep increasing the budgets, and kids do not increase in knowledge. So, and we had those numbers. Um, we saw them at the liaison meeting some months ago.
Okay, I'm in a...
They didn't increase, but yet we, we keep spending more and more money. So maybe, uh, an alternative for parents would be in line.
Supervisor Kits, you have not said anything on the subject. Do you have an opinion on vouchers?
I was just letting everybody get out of their system. Somebody's fired up since they came back from vacation. So, so I'm, I'm all hard-nailing this because of the situation with the, the fun, funding, but I understand what you're saying. There's always more that we can do. There's a lot of pressure for teachers to make do with what they have now, and I don't think it would be fair in that process to take money, because it is, as you, as much as you say it's not black and white, it kind of comes down like that. Education funding is separated. Now, that being said, parents do have a choice, and it's a hard choice. It's not always fair, but there is that opportunity, because we don't get to say where our taxes are spent and for what. We can talk about certain things. We can have, uh, discussions brought up, but at the end of the day, it's for the public good that these things go forward. There's always more that we can do. I don't disagree with that. But I do think that if we look at it like that, with vouchers over here and public schools over here, and we're just like, well, we're not worried about this. We're just gonna push the public schools off to the side. You can just do it. Now you're talking for, what's for profit? What's for, say, that we're not, it's not getting paid just to push kids through, and I'm not saying they are. There's a lot of great private schools that do great work. But there's the possibility of, if you do that, you have the opportunity to introduce more unsavory opportunities for people to take advantage of. And I think we need to push for public education more and not go, well, I don't think this works. Let's go ahead and just shove this money over here. And yeah, it's a long-term experiment. We've always been working with it. Democracy is an experiment. We've been working on that one. We still ain't got it right yet, but we're still working on it, but it's the same principle. So I'm in no on this, so I'll leave it at that. Thank you for letting me.
Well, we also have the overcrowding situation, too. By allowing parents to send their kids to other schools...
So you're saying we should build more schools?
We wouldn't have to.
That's what you just said. We need to build more schools, right?
If I said that, I am truly sorry, because I, I wanted to say the opposite.
You said they were overcrowded, so, so then we build more schools.
I, I think we probably, you too, uh, I think we've probably heard pretty loud and clear that there is not consensus to add to add that to the legislative priorities.
I was only suggesting a legislative thing. I really wasn't trying to change the world.
Do we have any other suggested new legislative priorities for 2026? Supervisor Graski?
Now that Steve brought that up, we had to vote on it when we come out, right?
Not...
Right, Marty? You have a motion and a second.
I think, I think the chair said that, that they're gonna vote on the, um, on this at the, at a following meeting.
Yeah, we have a, a future meeting.
So it would be voted on then, right?
Supervisor Graski?
Yeah, so under our funding category, we have, you know, several priorities that allude to our taxing authority. There's, there's one in particular that I'd like to elevate if folks around the room are, um, so inclined. But, you know, we've talked a lot about vape stores, vaping, kids, um, you know, keeping this out of the hands of, uh, folks that, that it shouldn't be in. And, you know, currently vaping products, e-liquids, things like that are all taxed as retail items in the state of Virginia. What I would like to see is kind of a, a evolution of the tobacco tax, the more, you know, kind of, uh, uh, old-school, you know, rolled tobacco, pipes, cigarettes, et cetera, and that come under the umbrella of a nicotine tax, right? Because nicotine is, is the addictive substance in all of this, and then all the other junk is what is harmful and hurting people, um, you know, not to mention illegal things that also get infused into these products. So I, I would like to see us advocate for a, a broader nicotine tax that might also help us raise some more revenue locally
Okay.
and act as a deterrent, possibly.
So I know you don't have language prepared. We can probably kick to staff to do some draft language of that if we have consensus. So I am supportive of that, and let's see if we could do a show of thumbs unless anybody wants to speak to that topic.
Do what?
A nicotine tax.
Nicotine tax? Well, y'all done done that?
He's talking about vaping.
Because right now vaping...
Extending the tax to cover vapes.
Yes, there is. Everybody knows I'm a conservative. I do not believe in taxing people, so I would be a no. Why would you, just like before, I didn't, I voted against it. You, you picked out cigarette smokers and taxed them. Why? One group of people.
But there's second-hand effects from smoking that affect people that do not smoke.
Well, then don't be around them when they're smoking.
Okay.
That's just another excuse to take money out of people's pockets. That's all I got to say.
So I had talked to Supervisor Graski, kind of mentioned this, kind of bounced back and forth. I had said something a long time ago. Uh, I'm a big supporter of this. I think it's a way, uh, to be able to go after vaping, because I brought that up so we'd have the ordinance to clear it out from spaces around schools. And I just think this is another tool-in-the-box possibility, because right now, we don't have that opportunity. We don't have that option, and unless the General Assembly changes it, we're still not gonna have that option. But it is something I would be encouraged to find out more about and see how we could write that up.
So I'm seeing support from at least five people. I haven't heard from you.
Do you know of it being done anywhere else? Uh, because it's not state law, is it, Marty?
I think what he's saying is try to get the state law changed to include vaping under the nicotine.
It's currently taxed as just a retail product.
Well, like I shouted out, um, there's a lot worse things that they're putting in, in vapes, um, like, um, what's that stuff in marijuana?
THC.
THC.
Yeah, that. So I mean, uh, it's, uh, if you were gonna do up something, it should include more than just nicotine, I think. I don't know how that would be written up, but...
I think marijuana and its byproducts are covered under a totally different taxation method.
Yeah, but, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think what he's suggesting is have the state put vaping products into that category of nicotine tack for taxing purposes.
Correct.
Yeah, and there's also, it's probably not, it's probably not the actual THC, but it's, um, a derivative of that, and I forget what they call it. But, um, there's nothing against that. I think that goes in some vaping.
Delta nine.
Yeah, the, the delta drugs and delta eight.
Yeah, all of the deltas.
Yeah.
So can we, um, maybe put together some draft language for us to review? Are there any other new draft priority items?
Do we still need to have the one with the railroad since it's, uh, going in? Do we still, still need to carry that?
Category is that in?
That was in transportation.
Yeah, we were, me and Andrew were talking about that, and we think since it's not quite there yet, let's, don't pre, premature.
Okay, I'm, I'm good with that.
Continue to support.
Yeah, I, I, I agree with that.
I would also suggest that in the future, you don't take it off because, until Bristol, or it keeps going south, so that we can continue to help our communities.
So maybe change it to continue to support passenger rail to Bristol.
Yeah, whatever that means, you know.
That's a good suggestion.
It's not just Bristol. It's like beyond, so that we don't just have one direction to get out of here. We have two directions to get out of here.
So, uh, one thing, and I've mentioned this before, we've talked about solar and having legislation put forward for that, but we haven't covered data centers. We know they're coming this way. They're putting in one in Bodatot. And I think it would behoove us to be, uh, more active in our approach as opposed to reactive. So I would just like to be able to, to look at that, because I think it's something that we need to have nailed down and decide where we, what direction we want to go as a county. Do we want to go the same way that Bodatot and Roanoke are going, or do we want to lay our own path? And I, I would be interested to see how people, how we discuss this and, and people's points of view, because it is new, because it is coming in pretty fast, and I just want to be prepared so we're not caught short, kind of like when solar came.
Do you think that it might, um, is there a legislative priority there or a discussion maybe for our planning department to put together some presentations for us?
I'm, I'm not sure. I'm just, this is me thinking, and it's never a good thing for anyone. But it's one of those things that we need to, it's a bridge we need to cross. We know it's coming up. It's not a when, it's if. So I'm willing to go either way and, and listen to the other members of the board and see what they think, but it's just something I want to drop out there to cover our bases. So I'm, either way, I'm, I'm okay.
Supervisor Biggs?
Um, well, we have an ordinance, and we probably need to go over it and review it, because that, that took a lot of, um, work to get that ordinance on solar. But you raise a good point, Supervisor Kits, because under land use, we do have preserved land use authority at the local level and support opportunities for localities to utilize the most effective land use tools available to them, depending on their needs. This specifically was a big fight in the General Assembly, because, uh, that was, they were trying to take away that tool for us and, and say, this is what you will do. And it's my understanding from going to VACO things that this will come up again this year in the General Assembly again. So maybe it would be, um, a good idea under land use if we had, um, some kind of...
Ms. Biggs, it's under, and page two, it actually addresses solar.
All right, all right, let me find that, because I'm under land use.
But I'm not worried about the solar portion. I know we're working on that, but data centers, we don't cover it all.
Yeah, and, and the solar thing was in, was in response to, like you said, there were some
Yeah.
push to take away local, uh, sighting authority.
Yeah. I think we need to stand strong on that.
So I, I'm hearing that we might need to just look at how we're wording that land use to make sure that it also applies to data centers. And then also, we might ask Bree in our planning department for an ordinance review as it relates to data centers. Does that satisfy your request?
I'm good with that. I just wanted to bring it up and see where we were at.
Yeah, I, I like that suggestion of, of having the planning department give us a, a presentation and, and kind of see where, where we're at, what gaps we might have.
How do we feel about that, everybody?
The, I, I, I still don't know how it fits in as a legislative, um...
I think we might have to wordsw- wordsmith our land use category to make sure that that is one of the things that we're considering.
Are, are we for data centers or against data centers, or we just want to know about data center?
We want to preserve our ability to make decisions about whether or not. Last year in the General Assembly, the General Assembly looked at, um, almost developing like a toolkit. This is how data centers come to you, so that there wasn't local oversight.
I know they did that with solar, but I never heard that they did that with data centers.
Am I interpreting that wrong? I'm looking to Mary.
Loudoun County got really caught short on that one, and, and Loudoun, they ended up having, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, it might've gone into a referendum vote, but they really got caught short, and it kinda opened my eyes to other things, because if you're not prepared for it, somebody walks in, you're kinda standing there short. And I just, and again, I apologize, guys, I just didn't know where I wanted to, I just thought about it as Supervisor Gravsky saying something. I just wanna make sure we're covered. I don't know if it's planning ordinance, if it's legislative, I just, it just kinda stirred things loose, and I wanna make sure that we're covered as we move forward, so I'm open to listen.
We'd have to research that, I think, a little bit, because I don't, I, I've not heard that. I have heard it for solar, but I haven't heard it for data centers. To me, the, always the big argument with data centers are power and water. And...
And some noise.
They, they don't make power unless they have emergency generators, but, so they're gonna use power, and that may cause issues, so...
The Loudoun ones, they were putting in their own multi-megawatt power facilities, but they were still having to go off the water. And I think the one, and somebody can correct me if I'm wrong, the Google one that's going in in Bodatot, that's one of the biggest things between Roanoke and Bodatot, because they're all in the same water authority. It's the water usage, not the power so much. So, again, just trying to get the infrastructure out there, so...
So, maybe we can have a future topic where we talk about this after staff gathers some information for us, so it's not speculative.
Right, because we, we've never talked about data centers, and there's a lot to talk about. And, and the, the electricity is also a biggie, because if you use a lot of electricity for a data center, sometimes it takes away from the electricity that your citizens have and causes blackout, burnout, whatever. So, that's a whole different thing. But I think, I think what we're looking at, like statewide, we want local control. Do not tell us how we should be going about our land use. I think that's the strong statement to make there.
Okay, do we have any other draft legislative priorities to add? Okay, Chris, do you think we've given you enough direction to take back and bring us back some, some suggestions?
We'll bring back some suggestions. I think on the data center, the good news is it's already on Bree's list, and she and I have already talked about that we need to do more research, because of things like the one in Loudoun, they, they're gonna have their own power plant. That's a whole different land use. We don't allow a power plant, you know, as a micro, so there's a lot of land use considerations there, but it also is electricity and water, and that's a infrastructure assessment. I think the, the study from the planning side would then also drive, here's some strategies. Are we allowed to do them or not? And if we're not, those might turn into legislative, you know, actions to ask for. And then reinforcing new technology, new land use ideas, we need to be able to regulate those based on the values of our own community, which is, we need to just adjust the language that we currently have to reinforce that a little more.
And then if we find out anything at VACO, we can throw that in, because we'll know by this week.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Is there any other discussion points for our legislative priorities? Okay, seeing none, is there a motion to come out of work session?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion? Madam Clerk, if you'll call the roll, please.
Ms. Biggs? Aye. Mr. Gravsky?
Aye.
Ms. Bone?
Aye.
Mr. Kits?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Fidzikowski?
Aye.
Mr. Demott?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Okay, is there a motion on the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Madam Clerk, if you'll call the roll, please.
Mr. Gravsky?
Aye.
Ms. Bone?
Aye.
Mr. Kits?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Fidzikowski?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Chair Demott?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Okay, now let's move into new business. As promised earlier, we have all three items that were subject to the public hearing at the opening of our meeting. These are broken out into three different action items. So, the first one is Montgomery County Public Schools Fiscal Year 25 Capital Fund and Incumbrances Carryover. The total dollar amount for this is $41,427,032, and this is for Designated School Capital Projects Fund Balance requested by the School Board for School Capital Project Balance and Incumbrances. Anything to add to that?
Nothing to add, other than these are current projects that carry over from June to July, so it just keeps projects moving, you know, from the appropriation standpoint.
Important to add.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion or questions about this item?
I just wanna pay a compliment on these three items. I thought that the detail that, that the school system provided us was really, really appreciated. I, I hadn't seen that quality of detail before, and I really, really appreciate it. It really helps when you're looking at the whole picture.
Good point. Any other discussion? Madam Clerk, if you'll call the roll, please.
Ms. Bone?
Aye.
Mr. Kits?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Fidzikowski?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Gravsky?
Aye.
Chair Demott?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Next item is Montgomery County Public Schools Fiscal Year 25 Year End Incumbrances Carryover. The total dollar amount for this item is $296,255. Do you have anything to add?
It's the same concept, they're just not capital projects, they're just carried over from purchase orders from like, in the operating accounts.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion on this item?
All this is carryover money from last budget cycle.
So far, for the first two, yes.
For the items that have already been budgeted, just hasn't been paid.
These were purchase orders.
Yeah, these were all purchase orders that haven't been paid yet, but all the work has, most of them.
It's all under contract with purchase orders, you know?
All of it is, okay.
Yes, correct.
Okay, any more discussion? Madam Clerk, if you'll call the roll, please.
Mr. Kits?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Fidzikowski?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Gravsky?
Aye.
Ms. Bone?
Aye.
Chair Demott?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Okay, our final new business item is MCPS Operating Fund Fiscal Year 25 Carryover of Designated Expense and Excess Revenue. The total dollar amount for this category is $2,318,874. Do you have anything to add to this one?
This one's just a little bit different. The school operating, they ended the year to the good, $120,000. And then the action is to recognize, this revenue was not recognized in last year's budget, so the revenue that they received came in above what was budgeted, so that we have to account for that. And then this appropriates where they are asking it to go to.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion? Madam Clerk, if you'll call the roll, please.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Fidzikowski?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Gravsky?
Aye.
Ms. Bone?
Aye.
Mr. Kits?
Aye.
Chair Demott?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Okay, now we're moving on to reports. County Attorney Report.
No report, Madam Chair.
Okay. County Administrator, Chris?
I have one. We wanted to just recognize September 27th is our scheduled grand opening for Teal Park and a, another celebration of Parks and Recreation Department's 50th anniversary, and that'll be held at the park, and we'll have more details to the public as, as they're finalized. But the date is September 27th, and we look forward to having people officially use the park.
I have it on good authority that there will be a lot of teams there. A lot of our Parks and Rec Children's Teams will be there for this celebration. That's awesome, thank you. All right, Board Members Reports. Supervisor Biggs?
Okay, I sent you all a summary of what was said at the Race for ACE. I guess that was back on August 2nd. But for the public, I think it's important to know that we raised $23,000, and that this has been going on since 2019, and we've had a total of 1,000 ACE students from Montgomery County, and they have contributed a total of 120,000 volunteer service hours to our county. And our board, we've always been very supportive of this program, and we have put in over $2.2 million over time to this program. So, the return on investment for our young people is emotional, as far as I'm concerned. So, I just thought you'd like the update. The race was well-attended. I think they had like 90 people that were involved in running or walking, and, and it didn't rain, but just a little bit. So, that's it for me.
Supervisor Gravsky?
Just one, one quick thing. We had, we had our MPO Board meeting last week, and at that meeting, we elected Angie Hill, our County Administrator, to be the Chair for that Board, so she will be preceding our former County Administrator, Craig Meadows.
Awesome, thanks for that. Supervisor King?
Don't have no report, but if it's, we talked about elections tonight. Tomorrow is National Recruit Poll Workers Day. So, anybody thinks we need extended poll hours and all, go to the office and get you a job.
Supervisor Kits?
So, had a chance to go see the ribbon cutting for Christiansburg High School, and just a note on this one, my daughter went there, I've coached with them over there and at the middle school, and the high school project is absolutely transformative. I was there walking around with Supervisor Gravsky and Supervisor Biggs and Supervisor Demott, and it was just like, wow, it was just showstopping. So, they're ahead of schedule, they're under budget, and they're doing some amazing things. So, that's all, just go big blue, that's it. So, thanks.
Supervisor Bone?
No report.
Vice Chair Fidzikowski?
No report.
And I have one very small item. I want to encourage people to go to the Montgomery County website and specifically look for the Parks and Rec Master Plan Survey. It's open now, citizens have the ability to weigh in on the future direction for our Parks and Recreation Department, what citizens feel like our community is missing, what are we doing right, what could we do more of? So, please do take a few minutes. I've already answered the survey. It took me maybe five minutes from start to finish, so please go online and respond to that survey, so we can get a really good cross-section of results.